Lot of snow, lots of...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call lead order, we'll call.
Mayor Westerfield.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Walton.
Yep.
Note that Beckman is in.
Then we have no public forum. Just, just for the camera, I want to make sure that we thank the city workers, the police department and city staff for all they've done during the snow. They've done a remarkable job. Okay, motion to consent agenda.
Over.
Second?
I'll second that.
We'll call.
Walton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Okay, we have a pledge request, we'll have the library board please present. You're welcome.
Thank you. I guess this is my state of the library. It got a little longer than I expected, but, okay. Twenty twenty-three was a fantastic year at the great new library. We completed our recertification, and that's good for another three years. Southwood's in the top tier of the state. Supposedly, well, we do get more money from the state because of that, but I tell you, it's not much. It's mostly a matter of pride that we are one of the top libraries in the state. The board was especially decided, excited, that we have over thirteen thousand visitors. And that is more than any other, way more than any other library in the county. We missed our goal of a thousand in December by three, but since we had thirteen hundred in October, more than made up for it. The new meeting room is just tremendous. Each month, we have a fiction and a nonfiction book club meeting there. The library board, the board of the Black Rock Lake Protective Association, the mayor's informational meeting, and the community club meet there also every month. There is no charge for these groups or for, like occasionally, the alumni committee meets there or the carnival committee or something like that. Whatever is a meeting that is benefiting Lakeview as a whole, we do not, there's no charge, we're using that. It's also used regularly by a sewing group and various card clubs, and they are asked to give a donation. Any business that take, rents the meeting, like our political group that rents it, or a, and anybody, or somebody in the community rents it for a big private party, or somebody outside the community rents it, then they are charged for using the two rooms. Their room is, room is used weekly for the five children of Marsha Hawkinson's storytime for preschoolers, and up to fifteen or twenty are using it every Monday afternoon for Diane Fickett's after-school program. The room was used for several large events this year, large events. We had a puzzle showcase and swap, we had, of course, had the candidates forum, we had the big meeting with the, about the sock trail, and two lecture series, one of them, of course, featured Pulitzer Prize winner Art Cullen, the other, venture Charlie Whitnap. Many individuals from outside Lakeview were at those, those events. And it was a wonderful opportunity to showcase Lakeview. We credit and thank Dr. John Quinn for conceiving the lecture series idea and financing it, and he is already lining up the speakers for next year. I want to comment that at the last event, the Charlie Whitnap one, some man was admiring the photos in the hallway at the library and asked me about them. And I explained that Angie Bennett had photographed them, and that she often had photographs in the R Iowa magazine. Well, this was another photographer who has also had photos in the R Iowa magazine, but he hasn't had, like, one of the big pages like Angie has. But this was a perfect opportunity to showcase the talent and the businesses that we have in Lakeview, just by this person checking that out. We have a locked display case in the library, and each month it features a collection of different individuals in the community. And occasionally, they come and give a talk about those, their collection. We've had some wonderful displays, very interesting. It's worth working, walking in the library every month to see what the display is. Recently, Alan Kessel gave a program on his photographs and his, his collection, especially, he emphasized musicians who had been born or had lived in Iowa, it was really interesting. We also had several author talks this year, and this is the most important sentence in the whole report. Our library has become what it should be, a vibrant community gathering place and source of information. We are asking for a three point two five increase on our budget, and this is all for salaries. We realize our salaries are extremely low. I think the kids that work, school kids that work at the campground during the summer part-time are making it probably more than our librarians, which is not right. We are gradually trying to give these increases, and so we're asking for increases, no other area, even the book costs are going up, supplies are going up. We just need to work on getting our salaries decent. Our book orders are finally moving along. We've had havoc with our budget for the last two years because we've ordered books and they are backlogged. But things are finally in the, in the system and moving along now, so things should improve there. We are very fortunate in our staff. Our head librarian is Diane Fickett, assistant is Carol Rowe, Marsha is another assistant, and then Joyce Bateen, Marsha Hawkinson, and then Joyce Bateen fills in just as needed, she doesn't really have regular hours. They work for two little wages, but they're very capable. Diane has the monthly staff meeting, so they work harmoniously. The library is very well organized and always tidy and welcoming. Since we have some newer council members, I would like to explain the library's various funds. First of all, the Colby Fund. Glenn and Ethel Colby left us a portion of their estate, it was an endowment. It was invested, and their intent was that the funds be used over many years for special needs at the library. These are some of the things that the Colby Funds have, have endowed and paid for. The first of all was compuration of our cart catalog and our circulation system, landscaping, the removal of our stacks, our storage room, and then enlargement of Apple area into our children's section, and then we bought new chairs and shelves and so on for that area. The purchase of a cram property next to the library, and we turned it into a parking lot. And thank goodness, we had the foresight and the opportunity to purchase that property. And we met and hit it when it came available because it was indispensable. We have had discussions about paying that, it's going to cost maybe forty thousand, so we haven't really been ready to commit that yet, but eventually we will probably go that direction, especially if we get some other big gifts. They also paid, helped contribute toward the new foundation of the library when the floor started cracking and sinking, and of course, a big gift toward the new meeting room. We also received an estate gift from Delma and Benny Jane Phillips, it was about a hundred thou, little over a hundred thousand. That was used for, to help pay for the new meeting room, the addition to the library. Then I want to talk about our trust and agency account, T and A. These funds come from gifts to the library from individuals or trusts, and are totally controlled by the library board. When memorial gifts are given, they go into this fund and this account. And at the monthly bills, you will see small amounts coming out of that because we use these memorial gifts to buy books, and then they are purchased out with this money, comes back out of T and A, and the book is marked in the library that it's a memorial gift for such and such. But we also receive larger gifts that go into this account, and especially at the end of the year for tax purposes. We funded a bunch of major projects this last year from T and A. The first thing was we changed the west door to an automatic door, this cost over fourteen thousand dollars. We had six thousand plus in our T and A from Herb and Darlene Onstad Estate, and we had a two thousand gift from Karen Westing for the, I mean, Karen that mattered toward the door. So that helped to pay for that fourteen thousand, and the rest simply came out of our general T and A funds. We also purchased new rolling desk chairs for the librarian's desk and for the computer stations. We have purchased two additional, two dozen additional folding chairs. We now have eighty-eight, and when our room was planned, that's what the architect figured we could have, and that room was eighty-eight seats. We can't buy any more chairs because we don't have more storage area. Art, then we also spent over four thousand dollars for cameras and mics to enable us to broadcast events into overflow in the main room of the library and to put events online. We discovered at the candidates forum that we needed more mics for the panel and to pass around in the audience when they ask questions, so the friends at the library purchased eight, an additional eight table mics. We are in the process right now of purchasing a laptop for the library so the library doesn't have to use her personal laptop to run these, this system. We are also purchasing a run coffee pot and a card that it will go on because our crowds are getting large, and we need to be able to move, have a bigger coffee pot and move it from area to area, and we need for big events and for the mayor's informational coffee. So our T and A account means we do not have to approach the library, I mean, the city, when we need things at the library, this is what we use. I would like to mention the invaluable aide of Friends President Jay Olish and of Treasurer Paul Olish. They handle refreshments for the special events, and they also, they do the books daily. I would also like to mention there are all volunteers who would assist in many ways, and all the trustees had extra duties and spent extra time on Library Matters. I did not put this in the report, but at the time of rag rock, we were swamped at the library, we had over two hundred people come in there. For one thing, we had the handicap bathrooms in town, it would have been a problem if we wouldn't have been open at the library. And we received afterwards, we received thank yous from people in other states, and even a gift of money that went into our T and A because they appreciated so much that we have those handicap bathrooms. We invite you to drop in sometime, see the individuals working on a jigsaw puzzle, the revolving table in the middle of the library, the individual reading a newspaper or a magazine by the west window, there might even be someone reading a book in a comfortable chair in the northeast corner. There will probably be people in the dish and playing cards or holding a meeting. And be sure to check our website, Diane does a wonderful job of keeping it up to date. Are there any questions?
How much, what's your average year of visitors to the library, just the ballpark, you know what I'm saying?
Well, this last year, we had over thirteen thousand, I don't, I think before that, we probably, oh, before the room, I don't know, maybe eight thousand, six thousand, something like that.
That's quite a, quite a jump.
It's quite a jump, yes. And it's people using the room, but they also then come into the main portion of the library, some, you know, check things out, look at things and whatever, so. I thought, one thing I thought when I was done with this report, I asked them, you have any questions that are going to ask if we have any problems? We have two, we had two problems this last year. One is we had some people that we've had to ban or they're not welcome to the library. The main problem we have had is too much success. We have tired out our librarians and our janitors, especially with these big events. So we are trying to make some adjustments. For this last event, we, Jim Millenacro got a group together from each side of Lakeview and set up the chairs so the librarian didn't have to do that. We have put up signs in each room showing how the room should be returned to its original order to help with that. We're trying to keep the newest chairs on one side of the library, the older ones on the other side. Our black chairs look wonderful, but they attract a lot of pet air and a lot of icing when the mayor has his informational meeting. And so we are, intentional informational meeting to sit at tables so that the icing doesn't go all over the chairs. We also realized that we can control this a little bit, we have to have enough sense that we do not let them reserve the room for two or three big events, like in eight, six days or something, you know. It just wears them out, we can't, we can't handle that much. So spread them out, let the events out a little bit more, so that's our main problem, too much success. Any other question, any questions?
I have a question, going back to your comment on paving the parking lot, do you have any timeline or anticipation on that?
No, we would have just mentioned it, I mean, we, we would have enough funds, you know, probably to cover, but we don't just want to do that. You know, we get gifts, in December, we got, two, two individuals gave us three hundred each.
Yes.
And then another individual brought in another check for eight hundred, six, eight hundred.
Eight hundred, yeah.
So, you know, our T and A is continually getting gifts, and it might be that someone else will give us a large estate gift, and then we will think, well, no sweat then, the next thing we would probably do would be to pay the parking lot, you know, if we get another big gift.
The only comment that I make to that is make sure you talk to us, because if we're doing a paving project, sometimes it would be beneficial for us if we're working on one and we can coordinate for mobilization for people that would want to do some other concrete work, then we can maybe combine something together and get it.
Yes, definitely. We would never go off and just do something like that without checking with the city.
Right, I'm just saying, you know, if, if it was in the next, you know, a couple of years or something, I would say, you know, we want to make sure that if we go get a quote on something and we want to include.
Include that in it, exactly, okay, we will keep that in mind.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah.
Like I said, we were, you know, we had talked, we would kind of like it if our lock could have another exit, you know, entrance one way and exit another way. As it is right now, it's not possible, maybe if we paved and things are great and we've done a little different, we would be able to do that. So we would definitely, the youth told us right now that it's not possible, so we would definitely be checking with anything like that.
Okay.
We don't just, I mean, we have this money, we kind of control it, but we just don't go off and do it without checking with the city that it's okay, like do the door, you know, think, major things like that.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I just think coordinating projects, sometimes we can get a little bit better, yeah, we can save a little bit money.
Save a little money, that makes it, it sounds good, okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Maybe we'll put that in our budget process.
Okay.
Thanks. Yep, you have a copy of this.
Yes, I do.
Oh, all right, I.
I just want to give one, I want to give one to Dale.
Well, yeah, or if you don't, if you want, if you can email it to me, have Diane.
I have one in this place, fill that in.
Oh, here, okay, it's on there, it's perfect.
Okay, go over here, go over here, news figure guide.
Oh, yes, I have that, please throw it out there.
Thank you, Judy, and thank the board, you guys do marvelous jobs.
Well, you know, we are very, the reason we have this T and A too is because we have had stupendous board members, trustees, and that, you know, for years and years and years, who have guarded the library and who have made it a place that people want to give their gifts to and things like that. No, it's, it's not just this board, it goes back a long time.
Yes.
Though Ryan and I have both gone off over thirty years. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris, you want to talk about the community club?
I can. You want, you want me to talk?
Sure.
I make the obvious for everybody. My mic's short and my, uh. A little, a little talking. Unless you want me to read every word? Would you please? I stumble a lot. All right. This is our advertising budget, basically, for the community club. We're not asking for any more than we did last year, still seventeen thousand five hundred. With that, we pay our sales, our salary for the marketing coordinator, listed there is everything she's doing. And then we have our print advertising, our Iowa magazine, Travel Iowa, Travel Guide, Western Iowa Visitors Guide, the Dennison Bulletin Summer Fun Guide, the Dennison Bulletin Review, Fort Dodge Messenger Destination Guide, and North Central Travel Iowa Guide, there's another one, the North Central Travel Iowa Guide, Lakeview Resort, the Carroll Daily Times Herald, the Tri-County Special, and the Iodak County Reminder. Those are all our print advertising, and they, the prices that we generally pay for that. Then our radio advertising, we do the Sip and Sample on that, the radio. Don't think we do any Stone Beer Concert on there, but we do the Storm Lake, Dennison, and Carroll Radio Stations and Fort Dodge. Online advertising, we boost Facebook posts on that. Basically for the Sip and Sample. And then we, TV and cable advertising, we use the Corn Belt Communications Channel for specialty event sip and sample. Think we put some concerts on there possibly. You know, we, I have the salary for the marketing coordinator on there, and we also have that same salary for our event coordinator, which, you know, sip and sample, Stone Beer Concert Series, all the events that we do. The Halloween Trail on Main Street, Candyland Christmas, all of those things. And we do the Facebook, the same volunteer every year, so. But, yeah, that's, that's basically what I have for you. No more, no less, my issue raised, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
That was simple. Yep, and thanks for the community club for all the events.
That's me, Sip and, I mean, Chris.
You could have talked just a little longer. I said, you could have talked just a little bit longer.
You said you needed to be quick this way.
Got a conference to go to, you know.
I don't know, enough's enough.
Okay, we'll move on to the COG Housing Trust Fund budget request.
And that's in your packet on page thirteen, this is just something that Lakeview has supported for several years, and it provides a thousand dollars to the, the Housing Trust Fund for them to do different projects. So, I mean, really, I don't think that this isn't something that I think we should participate in. I think that the COG has a lot of stuff for us, and that we should, you know, provide, it's a thousand bucks to let them do what they do with the Housing Trust Fund. So, I mean, there's information in the packet that tells about what they use it for.
Because it is five homes, wasn't it, two years, three months ago?
Yeah, and, I mean, I know there's, you know, there's money available, and usually it's money that, you know, you have to be an owner occupied home, and, you know, there's, I think, some income qualifications, but I know that they have money available. And the thousand dollars is basically for our participation.
It's always been a good investment. Can we give details action to them, enough tonight?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it just goes in, it says, I just put it in the budget and go from there.
We, we just have a couple more things, if you guys want to sit around, that's fine, if you don't, that's fine. I just wanted to give you an opportunity.
You want to, you know, have supper before you go to office?
Okay. Okay, Lake Shore Drive Project Pay Request number two.
So basically, what they're asking for is the retainage on the project. They seeded it and different things for the, you know, fall. So what they're really wanting to do is, is for us to pay out the retainage on, on what has been kept on it.
We motion to approve.
I was like, sorry.
We'll call.
So I can't?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, administrative report.
Obviously, Jason, I'll touch base on it a little bit, but pretty much the last week or so, we've been working on snow. We've had a few equipment failures in that, some of them were a fairly quick fix. Some of them are going to be in the process of getting fixed with that plow that broke its connection to the truck, so that's going to have to get welded. But we had, you know, some hydraulic hoses that blew off. If anybody noticed on, what was it, last Tuesday or Wednesday, when we were trying to plow snow, we had a nice trail going up, down the street uptown. So we certainly have a gem in Lester being able to fix, fix those in a pretty quick manner. And most of that stuff, we also, I don't know, we broke something else on Saturday, I think that he was able to get fixed.
Power steering light on the yellow truck, blue.
So, yeah, I mean, we just, you know, a few things, just the equipment, and it's just a matter of, you know, it's cold, it's very, very cold, and stuff doesn't, you know, when it's cold, we all don't move as well, and neither does the equipment. The community center update, the bid packets did go out last Tuesday. Bean Strang Kay, Kim will be making an addendum, especially, I think, on the electrical side of this week, they're just trying to button up a few things that they had left loose. One of them was making sure that we didn't need a fire suppression system, and we don't. So we confirmed that today, and a couple of different things that they, they've been asking about. So I think there's an addendum, but all of the packets, I think, went out to all of the contractors that had requested them, and then it was also going to be publicly available as well. I think we're still on the timeline of opening them up on the twenty-fifth of January, with us looking at the bids on the twenty-ninth of January. So that's in process. I did have a phone conference with John Danos with Dorsey and Whitney last week. And I'll have a conversation with a financial advisor as well, because that was what was recommended, about combining a couple of our, you know, potential debt issues so that we can get the best possible interest rate. So if we were going to do one, we might as well try and look at everything and see the best bang for our buck on an interest rate if we're going to go out and do some bonding. The interest rates are supposed to come down a little bit this year. So I worked on that a little bit. I am, I've been putting together the water report, you don't have it tonight, just because I've been waiting back to hear on, from the financial advisor on where potentially, you know, he's kind of forecasting where we should go with water rates. I am in the positive thought of that we're going to have to increase them just because of the future projects that we hold with the well, the water tower, water pressure issues, and all of those kinds of things. But I'd rather do a little and space it out than try and hold off a whole lot longer and then we have a big huge chunk that we have to make up for. So we're just trying to come up with a good recommendation with that. I've also been working on a salary spreadsheet to kind of look at where the union contract is, you know, supposedly going to go, and those kinds of things, you know, so that we kind of have an idea of what salaries are going to look at like and that, put that against the budget, so that that has information for you guys. Other than that, I don't have, really, when we get onto a budget work session, because of some of these other pieces and the way the weather's been, I haven't had a whole lot of time, and Jason and I, he's been focused on certainly the weather. So we haven't been able to go through a lot of stuff that we had wanted to go through, that we had planned last week, so.
Let's put on the back burner a little bit.
Well, yeah, well, you guys will have a couple of long nights.
Jason, you got some, you got something to give us other than snow?
All right, we fixed and cleaned the chainsaws, we took down the Christmas lights at the campground, we cut a couple trees, worked on a hydraulic leak that's on the grappler for the trees. We had a meter at a resident that wasn't working again, potholed an electrical line. Some preplane for some service, how we're going to get the service for the community center, where we're going to set our transformer, how we're going to get it over to where it needs to be without having to cross what I believe is called the boulder section. They own that other section of property right there.
Okay.
So we don't have to cross it. Snow, snow, snow. Hooked up another resident service, attempted to do a locate with the snow on the ground, that, that's a fun thing to attempt. This goes back to the, prior to the snow, we had to trash cans on around town as we were told they were full, fill the brown tank, brown the roads, ordered fuel for the generator at the wastewater plant. Found where water was leaking and running on McClure Street. So on the top of our clearwell back there, you see the big silver thing, that's called an aerator. That is a mandatory requirement per our water permit. There's a portion that comes out of the clearwell, and then the aerator sits there, there is a ten-inch, what I call a high mic, high max coupler. Well, every time the aerator runs, water is going like this out the, because I'm pretty sure the gasket on there is gone. Well, you can't just change that high max out, you have to have a crane to lift that, to get that high max out. Teresa and I did talk to Viking, who are tower people, and they fix stuff like this to get a price on cleaning the clearwell, which was part of the current budget, and while we were at it, we brought that up to him to see if that was something that they can handle, and it is, he's working on getting us a price to see what we can do. We do not have equipment big enough to do that. So we actually took some insulation and some plywood and a little heater and covered up the openings underneath, in between the legs, to try to keep that from freezing and causing a bigger issue. So if you do look at the side of the clearwell, it's either running water down it, or it's a giant icicle. And then, snow, snow. We did blow a hydraulic plane on the backhoe about four o'clock today, that Lester's going to have that off first thing in the morning. He'll be up in Storm Lake, a Storm Lake hydraulic to have that new hose replaced and rebuilt, or built, because they're the only ones that have the fittings that we need. And hopefully, we'll have the backhoe up and running fairly soon in the morning. We still got piles to move, and there's a lot of snow. And we got to push that snow up down at the campground, so if it happens again, we have a place to put it. So the boys are tired. They're all pretty close to about seventy-five hours or above for just last week. We've been coming in at four o'clock in the morning and working our rear ends off. But that's what we get paid to do.
Thank you, Jason.
I have a question and a comment. I talked to Jason about it yesterday. We've got the road grader sitting there. Nobody's qualified to learn how to run it. We got two gentlemen in town that are retired that have both volunteered to come on board and help us out. And putting somebody in that maintainer would free the trucks up to do something else or the manpower to do something else. It'd be just a part-time gig for them. Help our employees. And I think that maintainer would move a lot more snow than would the trucks do. That's something we should consider. Jason said the V plow isn't on the front of it right now, like if they're going around the lake, that would be very beneficial. But, you know, the thing probably hasn't been started for two years.
We start it about every month.
Do you get it started? All right. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the only concern that I have with that, I mean, I guess, I mean, I have concern with going around the lake. When Jason and I drove around today is like people have, I want to say, what do we call them, driveway markers? Or you have property markers that are like right on the, I mean, on the road. I was like, we can't get, the, one of the biggest problems is, is we can't get snow pushed off of the road. We can't take, you know, like the wing and get it so that, a lot of times, like how when the, you know, trucks are driving down, you know, my paved road in front of my place, they'll go by through it with the plow, and then later on, they come by and they push it off to the side so that you still have, you know, you can get it. I don't know how we're going to even get us beyond a one lane. We have no place to put the snow is the biggest problem. You know, we've got one lane around the lake. I think it's going to be a challenge for us to be able to get some of that snow pushed off, you know, onto, you know, different places where it needs to go in order to get us, you know, get it opened up more around. Yeah, the lake is a challenge. We were even out at the wastewater treatment plant. They, that's completely, except for them driving through the ditch on one side. I mean, that's completely blown in that we haven't been able to get it un, you know, unblocked.
Isn't there easel on either side of the street?
We have the right of way.
Right. But where they've got, I mean, if we were to push that snow, all of those yard markers are going to be gonzos. I mean, they're, they're, you know, I guess.
I mean, we got to, we got to have a place for the snow.
Yeah.
We're getting stopped by a resident because we hit them now and yelling at us for it. And we're like, sorry, and we continue on. We try to be as polite and politically correct as we can.
Right, right.
I mean, we've got a couple of mailboxes that we, you know, we're going to replace because we were trying to get closer to the curbs, and so.
And that, that stuff happens, and when we do hit a mailbox, we do need to replace it. That stuff's going to happen. It happens every year.
Right.
You know.
And I will say this from a personal, and this is my personal opinion, and I will tell you, this is also talking to my guys. I do not particularly care for the grader. It's not my cup of tea. I think it has a purpose in society and doing stuff. I do not believe it has a purpose in the size of our town. That is my personal opinion. If I am told that we will run that thing, you guys are my bosses. I will do what you tell me to do. However, I think there's better options out there, you know, a payloader. And then we talk about the piles and stuff like that. I think a payloader with a snow blower would be so much better. And we could not have to do the piles. We could fill the trucks as we go. I think that would work out at, I can't, can't remember the name of the road. I call it Lester to Trent's mom's road. I get confused out there. I think on a situation even out there like that, something with a blower, we can push it and we can get it out to the ditches. I also don't think we're going to tear up our roads. You know, some of our asphalt roads, we hit that with that belly blade on there, we're going to peel it like a banana. Not saying that anybody that is qualified to drive that thing, it happens. I know personally, I would probably do that because I'm not very good at that. Because I don't know how to run it. But I think we have better options. With what we're dealing with currently, with the amount of snow that we got, we need stuff with buckets. And I have two, I have a, I have a skid loader, which is a real pain in the rear to try to load a truck with. And then I have a backhoe. And that backhoe is running nonstop. We filled all of our equipment up. We've been filling it up every single day, and when we go fill up, we're on E. We've spent a lot of money and fuel because we're going and going and going. And we're doing all this with one man down compared to what we normally have in previous years. I think we need something with a bigger bucket, which would make things quicker with the option of a snow blower or a blower of some particular sort. That is my opinion. At the end of the day, you guys are the bosses, and I will do what I am told to do, sometimes reluctantly.
We don't have the money now or a backhoe, but what we got is a maintainer.
Well, I mean.
What's the maintain, what would be the worth of a maintainer?
I, I would be purely guessing. But I know when we bought it, looking at the one sheet that we have, I think we paid twenty thousand for it. I would assume we're probably a little bit below that. It's a nineteen eighty-six.
We put twelve thousand bucks in the rear end here a few years back.
The biggest concern I have with the maintainer is usually the maintainer or road graders, you know, goes out on straight paved roads, gravel roads, not necessarily in town around corners and those kinds of things. You know, any, I guess anybody in the profession that I've talked to that does city streets that aren't large city streets questions the efficiency of the maintainer without it being, you know, doing damage to our under streets. You know, catching on manholes and different, you know, different things that we, that we have. Yeah, I mean, I would have to look into see what our insurance, I'm sure we could probably put, add somebody to the insurance, you know, to run it if that's what the council were to decide to do. I don't know that it would actually free us up to do anything else other than what we've currently been doing. But, you know, I'm certainly, you know, if the council wants us to look further into it, we certainly can.
The problem is we saw Bill do it for several years.
Jack, before that.
Before that, yeah, Lon did it. They all did it.
Yeah, well, and I think the wear and tear on our city streets has probably shown some of that use of the maintainer. And it's, it's only, it's, its purpose is only good for a few things where some other pieces of equipment might be more broad, broad spectrum in our ability to do other things with a little bit more power. Because, I mean, I guess the biggest thing is the backhoe now, we had to pull that off on doing some stuff to go out and replace a transformer because somebody was out of power Friday night. And so Saturday morning, we had to pull the backhoe and take it to that project to get that taken care of. Where if we had, you know, a dual, another piece of equipment with a bucket on it, we could have been still loading snow and taking care of, you know, dual projects. But again, you know, I guess these are Jason and I's recommendations. I mean, certainly the council, you know. I've not been in experience where a maintainer is used on city streets. Anybody that I've talked to, whether with a county or with a city, why do you have a maintainer? But that's just, you know, if it's been used in the past and it's been used effectively, I guess it's not necessarily one that we shouldn't at least take a look at again. But I know that, at least Trent has said since he's been here, it's never been used.
Jason, would you be able to come up with, like, a T chart? In your opinion, a T chart on the benefits of the maintainer and what all we use it for? And the benefits of a backhoe, or not a backhoe, but a loader, and what you would use it for? All the things, and it's obvious what we use a snow blower for, not to blow leaves. But if you could come up with some type of a T chart in your guys' work environment and stuff, because, you know, that's an area where you're the expert and I'm not. So, like a T chart showing the benefits of each.
Absolutely.
And then if we were to get a loader somewhere or whatever, a nice used one or a new one or whatever, I mean, not saying we're going to do it, but just so we have an idea of cost.
A new loader right now from CAT is about two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and a new snow blower on the front of it is sixty-nine thousand. That's brand new. We don't have to have new. I'm not saying we need new by any means. Just, just so you have a reference point.
Yeah, like a reference point is all I'm asking.
Yep.
New and or used. Just so we have an idea. And maybe if we traded the maintainer or sold it, you know, look into that. But, you know, the most important piece would be a T chart so we can see.
Yep.
This is what we're going to benefit from if we do, if not, you know.
I will have that for next council meeting.
You guys are the ones that use it, not us. And again, thank you very much for your help over the weekend with the EMS call. We sure appreciate everything that you did.
We're here to serve everybody, so.
Dale, you didn't know, we had EMS call Saturday morning, and these guys were there to help us with it. It's blowing snow, cold in the dickens. We had one of our city plows help us get our way up to Sac City without any issues and stuff. That was just a tremendous help, and we sure appreciate it.
Okay, let's move on to the budget work session.
Yeah, pretty much, we'll have more next week, so.
That's it?
Yeah, pretty much it. You guys can all go.
Well, that was a great number eight.
Nine is not all bad either.
I like number nine. I make a most dear jury.
Second, second. Lead the jury. Thanks for coming, ladies.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for, great job.